Testing.
Did you guys get a rain this weekend?
Two inches.
Two inches? Yes. I think I got less than, less than one inch. Just right down the road, you know, like my house.
Yeah, valley gets less.
Yeah. The grass is trying to grow, but the problem is for me is it's trying to grow in the little trenches on the side of the road. If I drive through, over marshes, which, you know. So the cows are all stuck their head down eating the grass on the side of the road and they got their bottoms stuck out of the road. So. Oh, man, that's where all the grass is on the side of the road.
I haven't gotten any grass yet enough to do anything. I was gonna ask you guys a question, um, the board leaders. I have this little poem here that I wanted to read after the Pledge of Allegiance. It's very short, written in 1895, very short. If it were the board's permission after Pledge of Allegiance, from your two guys' permission, very short.
Is that legal, Cindy?
Well, it's not on the agenda and he's not really a public member. Um, let me see where we can put that. How about if the presiding officer reads it for you like his report? And then it becomes a part of the minutes. He wouldn't be able to do it?
He could be the presiding officer for the next few minutes.
I'll get it, I can do it under presiding officer's report. We can start this meeting if you want. And I'll do it if you guys, if you two say so. Nellie, are you okay with me starting this meeting?
Pardon?
Are you okay with me starting the meeting?
I'm okay with what?
Him starting the meeting.
Oh, sure.
So you have a consensus to start the meeting and you're gonna chair the meeting, Emery?
For a couple of minutes.
Okay. Uh, the time?
It is what, 12?
1:37.
1:37.
And present is Ross.
We have three board members, we have a horn.
Okay.
We have the appropriate staff. Long rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
Public comment?
Public comment, yes, the person. The member of the public, would you like to make a comment on what you brought us today?
If I could just make one comment and then I'll get out of your hair.
Well, you're allowed to make five minutes, I think you've got.
Well, I'll keep it brief, but you, you've got something in front of you.
Yeah, we do.
If we go with a catalog company, which is RAC Solar, which is a hundred billion dollar company owned by a billion dollar company, that are out for 40 years, you will cut your electric bill by more than 50%. That's 90% of what I have to say. Costs you nothing, you have to do no work, you pay me nothing, there's not a downside. RAC, I, I left everybody's name there, so you could go back, you could look them up. And RAC is, uh, I'm not very good with that, but, but on the back of this, they've, they've done, uh, Veterans Assistance Association, Costco, Home Depot, Walmart, IKEA, all international companies. They've done hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects. Now, as your representative, if you hired me, I will work with whoever's assigned to work with me to try and get you the best deal. Is going to the biggest guy on the block that's the most expensive with the most engineers, the cheapest job? No. But, um, for instance, they quoted me 10 cents a kilowatt hour when you guys are paying about 22 to 24. I have another source that, uh, sustainable capital finance that does PPAs. They own the projects themselves, they quoted 8.6 cents a kilowatt hour, that's a third of them did that. So I've got a real estate developer that uses, will approach his business from a practical standpoint, I can promise you. It's worth your definite time to, to learn more about it. Anything I can use to help you, Russ, or Emery, or Patrick, you just tell me what you want me to do. If we're faced with rate increases, this will reduce your costs. And at no cost to you. Any questions?
Well, we can't, we cannot add the questions of the public. We can just take information and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Okay.
The board may consider that later, future meetings, up to the board president. Thank you.
You got my contact information, get ahold of me if you'd like.
Yep, got you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Goodson.
Presiding officer's report, next order. Anyway, you know, I, we, we got this new board and three of us were elected. And I came across this thing, and it's pretty, this is, seems appropriate, you know, for today, sort of. This woman named Catherine Lee Bates wrote a poem in 1895. She called it Pike's Peak and she's put it on, and it's, there's a plaque on Pike's Peak, a brass plaque. So I shall read it, it's long, I'll just read the first verse here. "Oh, beautiful for spacious skies, for amber waves of gray, for purple mountains majesty above the fruit-pelling. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea." Now, we used to say it every single day in the sixth grade, and when I was in school, you know, elementary school. We had to say that, uh, America the Beautiful. Anyway, eventually it was changed to America the Beautiful. And, uh, in 1931, they voted on that and the Star-Spangled Banner to be the national anthem. And it, uh, the Star-Spangled Banner won that. Anyway, I thought it'd be good to say that on an election of board members day. Next item of business today is the general manager's report. And it would be, um, starting on page three, right, Patrick?
Sir. Good afternoon. Did everybody get some time to look through? I'm gonna take this off while I'm talking. Did everybody get some time to look this through, my general manager's report? Um, and to save you guys time, to not bore you to death. I mean, I, I will take questions on the general manager's report at this time. What we're working on today, currently this week is, you know, and the end of last week is the, um, the pump, sorry, the pump and motor installation at Barret Cove. So that's kind of what we're, we're in the final stages of getting back into water and our normal intake. And we're going at it full force. And, um, we're trying to wrap, wrap up finishing touches. So I'll take some questions if you guys have any regards to my, my report.
Well, I've always been concerned about the upgrade to 250 horsepower and that the electric services that support it were adequate. And so what's happening with that?
There, it's a complete upgrade of our electrical panel. And, and the pump, pump motor, which you guys, you know, yeah. It's a complete upgrade, soft start, everything's being put in. I presented you guys the actual specs for what we're doing. I don't have those in front of me, I don't know all that stuff off the top of my head. But, uh, there's, there's two electrical engineers, um, that have approved what we're doing. They, uh, they could have, they started the installation last week. Uh, they could have started a couple of days prior. However, they didn't like the way that everything was fitting into the casing. And they, they wanted some extra time to, to work on the fabrication, to be comfortable with where they are. Cause they, they know, they don't want to stick it down in there, have it outwork, pull it back up. But, um, I, I've been happy, last week we had the owner, we had the, uh, the vice president. And we had two of their electrical engineers down there at intake with myself. And I'm relying on them, Russ, as far as the, uh, you know, an electrical panel.
Yeah, that's about a half. Between 300 and 400 amps to sit up on the wall.
Yeah, so I'm, you know, I'm relying on the professionals there right now. I've, I've thrown everything towards my, uh, art, oh, it's sorry, my, our district engineer. And Blackwater's worth with how they've had a, they have a relationship and, you know. When, when it comes to that, I'm just making sure that, uh, Blackwater Engineering is, is, is doing their job and making sure everything's up to par. But thus far, right now, everything's good.
All right, good. Nellie, any questions? You got, you got it now? Any help?
No, I guess that's it, huh?
I have something while you're thinking.
Yes, sir.
On the barge, it said that you're putting the helm on there and propellers.
A prop shaft?
Yeah, okay. I thought that was like an outboard motor out there. So it's not, it's like you gotta, you're steering all up on top of yourself.
There, well, here we have a custom marine. Custom marine is doing the steering cable, the shift throttle cable, the lineal mount controller, the electrical cables, um, the wiring harness.
So that goes all the way back to that engine?
Yeah, that, and that was never a part of the original, um, um, contract with Twin Lakes. Neither was the motor, which, you know, Russ brought up in past, uh, meetings. So this is all stuff that Twin Lakes Management contract, or contacted a, a custom marine here in town.
Yeah.
I know, Russ and us.
Or the guy who runs the service.
And that's what they're gonna be doing now, the prop, okay.
How big a project is that?
Uh, that's, that's a couple more thousand dollars.
No, I understand, but like time wise, that seems like a big project or not?
No, it's not.
What is it?
Well, like anything with it, you know, uh, they're, they're fabricating a pedestal, a helm, I guess, you know, um, helm pedestal, like to, to actually do everything on, and then this is everything that's gonna go in there.
So when we really need this thing, is it gonna be out there eventually?
Yeah, oh, that's, that's the goal, that's the goal.
I know, it's not a movie I'm looking at.
Yeah, I know, it's been, um, everything's been piecemealed, um. Right now, actually, we, we thought we had a big issue with some fabricated, uh, 90s and a Y, where our check valves are that go into the pump motor. We thought we did, um, sitting with, um, I was down there last Friday with Todd, with Twin Lakes Management. And it was actually a simple fix, so something that saved us some money and we were able to, the guys, I just spoke with Augustin right before I walked in here. They're down there putting the wrench on something right now, and Twin Lakes has three guys working on it this week. So, uh, we, we were billed for the loaner barge. And so that gave myself an opportunity to speak with Twin Lakes Management Company on the reason that we're actually have the loaner barge. The reason we have the loaner barge is because our barge was not completed. They didn't meet the deadline, which the self-imposed deadline of September 1st. They've been very helpful in helping us, however, their deadline was not met, hence the reason that we needed the loaner barge.
Which we're paying for.
Which I have not agreed to pay for, I actually stated that I do not agree with paying for it. I agree paying for the men's work that they did assisting us and, uh, I'm awaiting, um, we've spoken, but, you know, that's something that we're gonna have to talk about. But right now, Twin Lakes Management has three people on it this week. They were on it on Friday when I was out there with them, and our work is done. Well, you know, the district, cause a lot of the work, uh, the way the contract worked out, it, it was, there was things that were missing. So it was Randy and Jose out there doing barge work too, because it wasn't in the contract. So we've, we've slowly got away from doing that. We've got all our work done and now we're just waiting for everybody else.
You got, on your propeller shaft, uh, I'm imagining that's just somebody to extend the bottom end of the outboard from 20 to 25?
No, it's already 25. They wanted the pitch, they wanna change the pitch. I don't, you know.
Propeller shaft design, I was just trying to get shaft in there somehow.
Yeah, well, the propeller, sorry, you know, the, the shaft is 25 inches. That's what we purchased from, uh, Pacific Marine in, uh, um, Madera, Fresno area, right throughout the 41. Uh, Todd, Twin Lakes Management, they wanted to work with the propeller on the pitch and do what they wanted with that. So they have a fabricator for that.
Pacific is who I think it is, they're really good people.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, really good people. I virtually gave a brand new, uh, uh, on-tune boat trailer to my friend. Because their trailer got burned up in the Vast Lake fire in my place. You know, my friend's got a boat, I'm on water and he can't get it off, and he had no trailer. And they said, you can, have him come down here, I'll give him, any one of the, I, we got that, it was 1,200 bucks on the 4,000 dollar trailer. Give 1,200 bucks for a brand new trailer.
They, they honored, uh, they gave, they honored their original estimate. They gave me an estimate for the motor that we bought, the 115 horsepower. And then when it came down to it, this happened, this happened, this happened, and then it was gonna be an extra 1,800 dollars. And, um, I, I probably spoke to the owner, Tarkarian. Tarkarian was his last name. And they honored their original quote, so in my book, they're good people. And I was down there the next morning and they loaded it up on my truck and away we went, so. Anyhow.
Anything else, or anybody? So, you know, if I must move on to the consent agenda. Both of you ready, and we have any questions on anything on the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Nellie, no comment on the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda by one of you, and one of you will second it.
Who was the first?
Haven't heard it yet.
Oh.
Russ.
Okay, Russ first, you second, okay.
All in favor? Boy, I didn't think I'd be doing this. The set discussion and the action items. That would be five minutes.
The board reorganization?
Uh-oh, is that where you are?
Yep.
Okay, well, the first item, I'm gonna get to that. Our first item on this is the board reorganization. And the vice president, president are here. I, I, I'll, I'll tell you, I think that we need to change and have a new president someday. I think Danny's not for like eight years. I'm not real excited about doing it, I would do it if I had to do it. But, you know, and we've moved along like we have been for a long time. We don't feel we have enough people here right now to, uh, to move forward with nominations and so on, we can postpone this.
Sorry, I can barely hear you.
Oh, 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 I know, I see the mask.
Yeah, the mask is lit.
Took the mask off for now. We can move to postpone this till, uh, next month, I think we did that last time. Or what we can do is take this item A and move it to, down a ways until Dan shows up. And then we can decide if we wanna postpone it or whatever. Is that with a, what do you guys want, what do you two wanna do? I entertain a suggestion.
I think that Dan had some documentation he's collected. And Dan and Danny are the personnel committee, which I've always considered they should have done the first phase of this thing anyway.
We're on, we're on the board reorganization where we pick a president and vice president. We're not on his.
We're on 5A.
Not on his evaluation.
Oh, I thought we were on, oh, nevermind.
Well, no, 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 no.
We're on 5A.
Yeah, anyway, we have to decide, we wanna just put this back, a few items, wait for Dan to show up. I think we should probably do that. If he doesn't show up, we'll look at A again. If no one's here, we'll have to either, we'll make a decision or move on, to move it to next month. Is that all right with you two? Are you?
Yeah, we can.
Do you wanna nominate, nominate, lead to nominate the president and do something like that and get the votes?
But if, I don't wanna do that when they're absent. If we decline it, then, you know, I mean, obviously I.
Well, we get, if we get one more, it'd be better, so. Matter of fact, are we gonna move this, I, go ahead.
I suspect Dan would accept it, and I would do that, but I have no interest.
Okay, we'll move it to.
So we can move it towards the bottom of the agenda going ahead and, and go to 5B? And then if anything happens where, when we get to that, if you choose not to vote on it, we could put it on the future agenda. Yeah, and that doesn't require consensus, just moving it.
Uh, well, now move on to 5B, which is the approval of the resolution for the emergency power shut-off.
And I just heard a car door.
Oh, good. Well, you wanna wait a second or something?
And he is here.
Okay, do you wanna wait to do A and just not do?
You know, that's up to you, if you guys wanted to stay with the agenda, so it doesn't get all mixed up. We can go back to 5A.
You again.
Uh, I need to, Emery, can you? It's 1:54, can you? Can you state that in the, for the recording that he arrived?
I am, I am, Emery's, I tell you.
You can't hear you, I'm telling you, you're mumbling. You're mumbling.
Let me remember, show that Dan showed up at 1:54, and he will now chair the meeting. I will now go back to my regular spot here. Dan, one, item A.
Item A?
A, 5A, which is the reorganization.
Oh, yes.
My comment that I made at the time was, I, Danny's been president for a long time, he's a hard act to follow. But I think our, our, we should change that someday. We should appoint somebody else as president. That's just my feeling, I said it, uh, we have.
I, I actually had a feeling that you would say exactly that.
I said it last year, why not? But anyway, that's just, you know, for the record, I said it. We have a procedure for this stuff, I think he's done it for eight years. He'd be a hard act to follow, he's really doing a great job. It's easier just to sit over here and, you know, be guided by president and vice president. Anyway, you're in charge now, I am now shut up.
Anyone else? Did you already say your, your piece?
Yeah, I said, I'm not gonna say it again, because you're here. I think you're here for.
Okay.
Are you accepting nominations, or what?
Yes, yes, I am, I'm accepting nominations, yes.
Well, I would nominate you to be the president.
Second.
And who would be the, you don't have to make a motion on it yet. And who would you nominate for vice president? It's better to do it in one package?
Okay, we'll do it in a package. I'll nominate myself for, for vice president, if that's legal.
We can second that.
Yeah, I'll second that too.
Okay, so the nomination is Dan Hankamire for president.
Emery vice president.
And Emery Ross for vice president.
And you better come to all these meetings.
Okay.
Are we all in favor or what?
And so would you, would you like to make that a motion? We'll say that you first, you did first motion, you did second, and then you vote? Or do, are there any other nominations? You can always make another nomination too, and then you guys work it out.
We're really hot this one.
Can I just make a comment? You know, I, I, I just, I just walked in here late, I didn't, I didn't expect to be late. And I, I, I know that my wife is going through dialysis and I, I'm trying to have that change so she can go in earlier for, just for this day. But I, and I don't like being late for these meetings, I just don't.
Can I tell you, for Olivia, you'd do anything. I made sure I, she's a great person, whatever, it won't work for her.
And the later the better for me, that's all I can say.
Can we, so we're doing just sort of all in favor or what?
If there are no more nominations.
Yeah, if there's no more, no more nominations, okay. All in favor, Cindy, by saying yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Are there any no's? There's one absent.
I forgot to say that earlier.
And, and I actually went abstaining, because I don't wanna vote for myself.
Well, oh, yes.
Okay.
We got, so we got a.
Well, wait a minute, I have to abstain too, so.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
You can vote for yourself, Emery.
Since it's the precedent position, I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting for myself.
Okay.
Okay, let me move on to item B, which is approval of resolution 2020 regarding the PSP power safety and power shut-offs.
I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
Patrick, you know, when I, I looked at this and I thought, if, you're on page 24. If Sunbelt Reynolds and United Reynolds and Berry Electric weren't available, you'd have to have a board meeting to, to, to get your, your work done. I think it's a great thing, I think we could just say, not, not make it a resolution, but just say, yeah, it's a good idea. But you need to be able to, you know, we could say those, or we could say, you can have all those, but in an emergency, you can pick anybody else. Because you don't wanna be hung up waiting for the board.
Sorry, I don't know where it states that we have to use these people, these are just references in, in.
It's a resolution.
Well, the, 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 the resolution doesn't, doesn't list all these specifics off, those people. The resolution states that we're gonna adopt an SOP, a standard operating procedure. And every standard operating procedure that I've seen from any other district or municipality when it comes to PSPS has the list, because that's what we want. We want our, we want our, our staff to go, where's the, you know, just say their brain's shut down and, you know, they want, I want them to go, all right. I want, if all of us were out with COVID and Dan had to come in here and get us back in water, water, I want him to go, okay, I could call Rain for Rain. You know, you see what I'm saying?
I bet you don't wanna see what I'm saying. I said, what would happen if they weren't available? You're, we're, you, you are relegated to have to use those. I want you to, Dan, we choose anybody we want to.
Why you just tell me I have to use those?
Because we just had a resolution with a minute. Cindy, maybe you can.
Where's the resolution, sorry, where's the resolution with those names in it?
Yeah, where does it name them? I'm on page 20.
The pages are 24 says the things. Then we have this resolution, that if you refer back to it.
No, you wouldn't, you would only use whatever's in the resolution.
Yeah. Okay, no, I didn't read the resolution that closely then, I guess. Does it say you can pick anybody you want?
Uh, let me look at, I was under.
It doesn't, it doesn't say any.
It just says.
I'm really bothered by the fact that these are in this piece of paper that make, that you don't, if you don't pick those things, then you get in trouble. I don't.
I am.
The board.
See, I don't think that way, I'm trying to make it a standard operating procedure for some type of emergency.
This is just, this is, this number is for Sunbelt Reynolds. It's not for, it's not for James Anderson, or for.
What I, what I will say is if you're, if you're accepting the resolution, it says the approve, approve a resolution regarding the PSPS.
On page 24.
And right here it says, therefore be it resolved by the board of directors, the late Don Pedro, Community Services District shall adopt provided public safety power shutdown PSPS SOP and implement into the district operations immediately. But it does not name a company in the resolution. And when you make your motion, you're only accepting the resolution, you're not accepting the pages prior.
But wouldn't somebody look at those to say, well, what's in the, what is in the resolution that you guys approved?
Well, what's, what is approved is that you adopt a public safety power shutdown SOP.
And here it is, with these names. I, I don't, I mean, I just don't wanna hang him up, or somebody like Lou says, how can you guys have this company you're paying money to?
We haven't paid money to anybody, these are all estimates.
I know, I'm saying, we're talking future, okay, Patrick? Some, at a meeting, we say we're paying 700, whatever hell we got here. And here's a check on, in, in the things over here, you know, uh, or some other company. And we'll say, well, the resolution doesn't say that company in that.
Well, I wanna say something, I, I brought you guys a, uh.
I think it's good, I'm just trying to ease it, do you?
I got, brought you guys a PSPS SOP last month, and it wasn't specific enough. And it was kicked back to me and told to be specific.
Did I say that?
That, that's what I got, direction from board president. And I think, I think it was a consensus, I believe it was a consensus on it.
It was a consensus.
And so I came back with specifics. I was told that if, if everybody was gone and you guys had to run it, how, how would you guys do it? That's literally what I was told. So this isn't what I've brought? If I can make, I'll make whatever changes you guys want to.
No, if that's what you were directed to do, I, I'll shut up, I don't recall that, that's fine.
I can make it, you know.
I just think it hamstrings you, but that's okay. If we said that.
Why, why would you say it hamstrings him?
Because he's, I think he's, he's stuck with these things that are on this piece of paper.
No, this is just showing.
He can't pick anybody else.
Now, Emery, this is showing that I've done my background and I've done work, so I'm not just calling United Reynolds or Volvo Reynolds and saying, hey, I'm. This is showing, yeah, I've spoken with people and I've, I've actually talked to them and I've.
So what actually should be? So what actually should be here is these are suggested, these are suggested.
Can I make a suggestion? Emery?
Yes.
Taking your point in consideration, and I probably shouldn't be in the conversation. But the resolution can always be changed. It's not, you should do it by resolution, period. That's it. There should not be just by a vote. Resolutions are easy to track. They're easier for auditors and they're easy for prior board members down the road to go back and secretaries. One of the things, if you wanted to add in there, a company by the GM's choice or something like that, some type of wording, you can add to this resolution. We can make the change in there to whatever it is. It's not like this is solid.
Something really good over there and I thought that was a good idea.
I have a suggestion. Go ahead. Number one, SOPs are easy to change too. You know, you can update an SOP because they constantly require changing. But cannot we just ask that he develop a list of. Vendors? Of vendors of.
Emergency vendors.
That would fit this requirement. Could fit the requirement, you know, and have some contact numbers and we got a list of people.
So what I've done, but just on a different piece of paper?
I had a few more options on it.
Okay. But I, you know, I don't remember that we told you to do that. I apologize.
He said that he did.
Yeah, I said that. Did he tell you personally?
Yeah, it was, no, it was rejected by you guys. You guys voted it down.
I don't remember that.
Well, I'm gonna go home and look at that.
Well, you can look at my minutes and see what was said.
Minutes are comfortable. We go back to the minutes.
Okay, so how can we just put that in here? Can we just say these are suggested vendors?
With the following additions.
Well, are you want to approve all his list of vendors? Or are you gonna just leave it to whatever he wants to put? That's.
These are example vendors. So then we can, that just leaves it open. We don't, if there's, if these are not available or something else, we can go to something else. And so we can just, just put a note in here that these are just examples.
Old vendors.
Okay. I'm looking for that P, whatever that is. Do you know where it is, Cindy? It's not on the, oh, here it is, a power, is this power resolution thing?
Yes.
Well, all this says is no action taken. Power backup, no action taken.
That's back.
That's the, that's what it says.
All right, if I just ask that we just use these as examples, our typical, typical, these are typical vendors.
I will state that, if you, if you're comfortable, if the board is comfortable with that, I will state that after this first opening paragraph describing what a PSPS is, I will state that these, these members listed are potential vendors or examples of vendors. Because all else, when this stuff happens, when, when stuff hits the fan, I'm gonna be calling every single person who ever get the quickest.
Yes.
I just said that I didn't want to hang you up. That's all. That was my idea.
Just want to allow you all the freedom to do that.
That's all we're looking for.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll state that in there. And will you guys move, were you comfortable with me stating that in that first?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that, the motion would basically be to approve the resolution with the changes of adding a list of possible vendors? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
Expand the list to potential vendors.
To, yeah, to not shorten, to, so I'm not pigeon toing ourselves.
I was just saying, we don't want to hang you up and have to make another resolution. That's all I thought. You don't want to have to meet with the board when it gets everything done. That takes care of it.
Does anybody want to make a first?
I have a motion to accept the resolution with the following changes. That Cindy delineated. What's that?
It's same damage.
It does?
And a second?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor and a second. All in papers, signify by saying, I'd say an aye. So we have, we have four approvals and one absent. And the next item on the agenda, item C under five, is approval of resolution 2220, I'm sorry, 2020 regarding the selection of NDS final water service rate model to move forward with.
If you guys, you know, and that's on the last meeting when we met, when Ingest was here and did a presentation, they presented alternative A, which is a, to remind you guys, you guys all were leaning towards A, which is more of a fixed. So a rate increase that doesn't rely on consumption as much. And then there's also an alternative B, which is a 60% fixed and 40% variable. And then, so that's going to be one vote. And then there needs to be a vote from a percentage amount. Just to remind you, there was a majority that were leaning towards the 7% last time, but that is your guys' vote. I just, I had that written down.
I think we went down and asked each person, right?
Say that again.
We went around the room and asked each person. I think I was at five and the rest of you guys were at seven at the time.
And I believe that's correct.
That was just a.
Yes.
Well, are we asking, we taking questions yet, Mr. President or not?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so we've talked about alternative A, right? So 70% fixed means, I assume, the monthly service charge. Is that correct?
Yes.
And 30% means the amount per unit.
Yes.
Okay, so if we said 5%, 70% of 5% would go to the monthly service charge and 30% of 5% would go to the fixed, the per unit cost, correct? And we, is it, and this increases, as I recall, doesn't it over some periods of time or something? Or is that it for five years?
It's a five years.
That's for five years?
It's five years. Yeah, I vote, I, in our presentation, it's my understanding that you can't go out any further than the five years.
That's right.
Under the prop to 18.
And there is no other cost of livings or anything in between?
No, 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 no. That would be, that would be the increase. If you guys voted on that, that would be.
That right, Cindy, or no? That's my question. I asked Betsy. She couldn't answer the question. This question I asked you, she couldn't answer the question.
Well, I think what Emery's saying is before, when we did a rate increase, we had, for example, you would have 42 a month and the next year be 43, 45. And I think he's wanting to know, will it go up in increments during that five years? And is that what you're asking?
That's my question.
Yeah, so it'll go in increments throughout the five years. We have, you guys looked over the charts that had them all. We can bring them up.
So what you're saying, it would go every year 5%? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, but it'd be 5% until the next 5%.
Yeah, I know, pound, 5%, 5%, 5%.
Yes, because it does say year.
It's 25% at the end of five years.
Yep.
And the monthly billing and these per unit charge would be 25% for, for all year in 25, 25 years. Not quite true. Am I wrong? What is it?
Well, you take, let's say if it's $100, $100 times.
400%.
Yeah, but times 1.05, that's year one. Okay, times 1.05, that's year two. Times 1.05, that's year three. Times 1.05, that's year four. Times 1.05. That's actually 124%. So it went up 24%. That doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
Should be more than that. And that's why it sounded, it should be 33, it should be 133, I think.
Yeah, I have fat fingers, those are small calculations.
Okay, 63. I have another question real quick.
Yes.
I think, Patrick, for Cindy. In your, in your manager report or something, you fix so many meters. I think it was $1,425 meters fixed. So is that the total number of voters?
Hold on, so we're going.
1,425 meters.
It's 1,453, I believe.
So 1,000, how much 450?
453 is.
453.
Yes.
So for the people to do this, they need 500, they need 200, they need 25. So if you take, you know, half of a thousand's 500. So they're gonna be in the 7, 800 number to of letters you're gonna have to give of disapproval. I think it'd be impossible to disapprove it.
Yeah.
It'd be difficult.
Well, they, she stated that they.
It would be tough.
NDS does 12 to 15 a year. She'd been with the company for 12 years and she's never seen one turned down.
And what about people that are, don't have meters? They don't own?
No, they don't.
Outside place you use. I'm not that, I mean.
Availability license.
Availability license. They don't own.
No.
Okay.
They don't.
So at 7%, we're actually talking about a 40% increase in five years. In five years.
Where does that make it?
Well, and we're at 50 bucks now, so 50, at the.
Almost 90.
It'd be 20 bucks, 70.
70?
Yeah.
And the water would be what?
I don't know how to do that.
That's seven bucks, or $2.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It would be 40.
40.
I thought they lined that up, didn't they?
Yeah, it's all, it's all in the report.
It's in the report. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's, what I see, you know, just telling you guys my opinion. This is a board decision. However, the need for money, as you guys all know, is there. So if you guys are confident with the way I'm spending your money, the plan that we have in the future, you know, I'm gonna do my best to take a rate increase and to put it right back into the system. That's my job here. That's what I'm gonna keep doing and there's not gonna be a shortage of work.
As long as we have our destiny.
Yeah.
How do we, how do I have that money for?
Yeah, I love to, I love to keep a, I know it's not much at all, but I love to keep a million dollars in the bank at all times. But just maintaining things, it's just, I've been blowing through money left and right lately, but that's because we're upgrading the system. We're doing lots to it. And not on top of our emergency repairs and just staying functional, but we're actually, I mean, tanks are getting cleaned and inspected and fixed, you know.
We see the progress, so, you know, we understand. I think I'm speaking for everybody when I say that.
How, how much money do we think we are going to get in a year from this, more than what we get? We see it, we see like hovering at 900 and a million in the bank. What do you think, what is this gonna do?
This is supposed to, this is supposed to fund our, you know, we can't just say, I don't want this much. So what I did, I put together a list of capital improvement projects that we have, crucial ones. And then that's exactly what this is doing. This is breaking that down and paying it off over a certain amount of years. But this is to fund our capital improvement projects right now to get back at generators, which hopefully we could get a grant to assist us on also. But it's not gonna pay for everything. This is to upgrade our meters. You know, as you mentioned and we'll talk about once we get to the step before our meters, those meters will fall apart left and right.
We have no idea what may come, what may happen between now and then.
Yeah.
I mean, we could easily lose another pump.
Yes, and this is just to, when it was coming up with the rate design, she said I need a list of all the capital improvement projects that you guys need. And I sent it to them and she said, we need to minimize this list. Because we can't, you know, we're, this list is justifying, we need to raise the rates 400%. You know, and now we're not gonna do that. So what I did, I took the two top things that I thought, that's backup generators and that's our meters. Because the intake is at the time already, we're working on that. And so we took that money and they broke it down and then, yes, sir.
Well, the truth is, I mean, we, we have a budget for this year and we have, we know what we're selling as far as we know what our income is and we're in control of our budget. And the 7% increase is gonna involve 7% more income, basically. So it's not nebulous. I mean, it's gonna be pretty simple to figure out where we're going. And 7% isn't gonna do very much.
No, it's sure gonna help.
But it's gonna help.
Yeah.
And if we can maintain our million bucks and get along on 7%, still make some progress, I'll be a happy gambler.
And this community, you know, this community, by not raising rates, yeah, you're helping out fixed incomes and I get it. I completely understand. But by not raising rates, you know, for five years and then say if this board was to kick this down and it was still a few more years, so then, so then see you're out six, seven years and then you go starting doing it again and then it's another, then you're, then you're out close to that decade of no rate increases while we have a struggling aging infrastructure. It's a hard pill to swallow. We're continuing to go after any other funding to assist.
Yeah, but 7% looks pretty measly the first year. But the calculation is, it's 40% over five years. 40% is way, way better.
This board.
Still gonna be skinny, but.
You know, this board started talking about rate increases during the drought. And it's a key, we can't raise rates when we're trying, you know.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have water. You were, Pete was here then. You know, so we didn't do it then. And it's not that we didn't do it because the board didn't want to raise rates. And here we are again at a really bad time again. And it's gonna have to, like I said to you a second ago, I don't think they can vote it down. You know, which is unfortunate because there are probably people that are really hurt. You know, I don't know if there's gonna be any stimulus money or anything, but I know people are hurting. I can tell you that we're hurting with these cows. You know, these restaurants are closed. We're not getting any money. We're having to feed them. There's probably people like that, you know. This is by the worst it's ever been for me, but, you know, I'm not gonna vote this down because of that. But I do think it should be as small as possible because I think a lot of people are really struggling. And, you know, people that are in the restaurant business, they, you know, I don't know if any of that stuff's coming back. But, you know, and I know we probably could use the biggest amount that's on that list, the number, you know. So there's gotta be a happy medium and we have to sell this thing. And I don't think that they can, they'll vote it down. There's too many people. But we need to make it palatable and as good and soft as we can when we sell this thing, you know.
In my past, you know, as a contractor, you know, you show the minimal, the smallest job, the lower end job, and then you give them the Rolls Royce over here. And then somewhere in the middle, it's usually a good, a good number. You know, and that's kind of the way I look at things. You know, a 10% over five, you know, I mean, that's, you know, that's a lot. The 5% is smaller as well. So I'm a general manager. I want as much money as I can to help this place out. We could, however, you know, I mean, it's what works with the people and that's what's gonna work with me. You guys don't mind, I'm gonna step to the restroom for one moment. You guys all right with that?
I was just gonna ask Cindy if you would read the motion for us because I'm not sure, I'm unclear on how that motion should be stated.
You would be approving the resolution. Give me just a second here. You would be approving the resolution 2020, whatever number it is. Moving forward with the rate increase of.
7%. That's not part of this.
Alternative A or B or the percentage. Because what happens is I retype this resolution to just include what you're picking. If you're picking alternative A or B or the percentage.
Okay, so the motion would have to include either A or B.
Yes, and the percentage.
Okay, so could I get a motion then?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Selecting alternative.
A or B.
A or B.
I think we like A, don't we, unanimously?
And I, yes, that's it. I think that's what we wanted to.
Okay, approving the resolution. Selecting alternative A.
Yes.
Is that, okay, alternative A.
And I like 5%.
And then I need, whoever's making the motion.
We haven't figured out this percent, haven't we?
Russ is making the motion.
On A. Pro A.
On A and what percentage? You're making the motion.
No, let's do separate thing. We have to do the A first.
No, you can do it together.
Okay.
Because you're accepting both of those within the resolution.
A7.
With 7%?
Yes.
So approving resolution, blah, 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 selecting alternative A and 7.
7%.
Percent increase.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second. One second. Okay, so Russ and Nellie. Okay, and a vote?
So there's a motion on the floor to approve a rate increase.
No, not a rate increase, the selection of.
Alternative A and, uh, a percentage increase of seven percent.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye or no, because I'm fine.
And, so Emery says no, and we have one.
Otherwise, I'm okay with A.
And we have one absent.
It's too bad we couldn't have done both of those separately.
So the motion is approved.
Okay.
Cindy, when I sit here longer, I sit here more, I'm happy with an eight.
What's that again?
I'm starting to consider thinking eight was better than seven, but.
Eight?
Actually, I, I actually thought the same thing. It's we, you might be even.
Compromising.
Yeah.
Compromising with Emery, because.
Okay, so, so the next item is item D, and, and it's for information. It's discussion regarding an update on system meter audit. Yeah, so, um, last meeting, I was asked to bring back this information, and, and here it is, um. To speak on, you know, uh, right now, there, there's, this has been done by one person in the district. Augustine, um, whenever he has free time.
Page thirty.
And whenever Augustine has free time in between calls, and he's around something, he hits, he hits the houses. He, he has this list, and he does this. So, you know, I, I wanna just start out by telling you that this is Augustine's work, he's done an amazing job. But, um, this, these were his numbers once he had gotten to seven hundred and fifty, which is about halfway of, of the meters. Um, so, but you have, you know, right there, there, there are ninety-nine meters have been replaced, you know? So one in seven of the meters that we're going to aren't.
Good.
Accounting for the water that we're selling. So that's, that's a lot of the water loss, well, I won't say it's a lot, but that, that's the water loss numbers, and how they're slowly getting better, right there is one of the reasons. We're also collecting more revenue because we're actually collecting what we're selling. Meters have never sped up. When they go bad, they slow down. So, um, so with that. When you say they slow down, does that mean they're collecting more water than what we were reporting? Yes, yes, yeah, so, um, so ninety-nine meters have been replaced.
The water leaks through?
Yeah, the, he, he raises boxes whenever he finds, and his job is to go there and make that box, like we're not gonna see it again for another couple of years. So he's marking the boxes on the, on the roadway, so we know where our water lines are. He's replacing the registers, um, and, you know, he's clearing them off, and he's found twenty-one leaks, just went out there. In addition, he's, he's making contact. Our rate payers, who are gonna see their rates increasing, they see someone out there working in their front. You know, I mean, that's something that, I think that's the most valuable thing, and.
Can I just see the records?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you said you saw twenty-one leaks? He, he has found twenty-one leaks. Twenty-one leaks in the box, customer, mainly customer leaks, but there's been a few that have been ours.
It's on one side of the meter, the union's leaking on the other.
Yeah, and with that, you know, just, and he's, he's identified some leaks that haven't popped up either by just seeing the leak indicator. And if people are present, Augustine knows to go, speak to them, say, hey, your leak indicator is spinning. You know, he's doing a very thorough job on these things. Um, a lot of the times, you know, the leak indicator's spinning because someone's using the water. But, um, a part of the inspection is to go and actually run water and to make, make, uh, contact with the homeowner if one is available. So, um, just getting out there and doing this has been, and, and with this, this guy, no, he's been in the district for a little over a year. He knows these meters already left and right. He, I, I mentioned him in the dress last week with another issue, it was on Panchita, and he was like, oh, I know that meter. You know, so that, that's one of the good things that this is, this is bringing to the district, so. I'm, go ahead, did you?
I just got a specific.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-one registers with cut.
Mm-hmm.
Wires, now, that's the pulser side of the thing. The register is still keeping track of the water as best it can, it's still.
If you're mechanically reading it.
Yeah, but so, so having a, I mean, you might have a customer that cut a wire once, figured out that, well, I didn't save any, they came in back, they read the meter, which is, I assume the procedure. Uh, do the same people cut the wire multiple times?
No, we haven't found that, and for the most part, a lot of them are chewed through. But, yeah, we don't have, at least in my tenure with the district, we don't have an habitual problem child that's cutting, cutting them, and, you know. We probably should've said cut, it's just damage. Well, no, some of them have been cut, you know, and from rocks, damn, you know, or, you know, whatever has cut that line. You know, and with that, we, we've been reading more and more meters manually since I've been here, which, which is like you're stepping back, but it's not, you know, to, to do all of our meters. It's a verification. It's a verification, and all these new meters that we're installing, these are all, like, they're a generic, uh, Badger meter that, that could be swapped out with these remote AMRs, uh, multiple different types as well. So if we come up with a new system someday, it's not a big deal. But, so, so these numbers, I would double these numbers, because we're about halfway there on this report, and see, that's what we're gonna come up. So I'd say there's roughly gonna be two hundred meters that. Have to be replaced. That, that, yeah, and we've already replaced ninety-nine. So I remember that this is one of your, your guys' largest, uh, oh, you, upon my arrival in the district, we guys brought out the problem meter that's multiple times, and, um, we're staying ahead of it. Augustine's staying ahead of it, and Cindy, because Augustine does the work, and then Cindy's gotta put all the work into the computer.
I'll be right back, I just need to.
I think that's a word, make, make four copies.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll get those.
Okay, if we could stay on this until I get back, not close it down yet.
But, yeah, with that, uh, it's been a two-man show on the, on this meter read. One person out in the district doing all the work, and then Cindy inputting it all, they've done a wonderful job. So I, I have to ask, so if he saw twenty-one leaks, doesn't that make sense that we should be checking these meters on a regular basis? Then that's why we're doing it, yeah, absolutely. They, um, operation staff that have been here for a long time, I asked them when was the last time they did, and they said it's never been done.
What?
A system meter audit.
But they, they used to read them.
Yeah.
Before they.
Yeah, and so, so probably, but they used, that was just a reading of them too. But we're gonna actually go around and fix things and. Check them. Check them and, and run the water, because that, that was something, uh, my first day in the district, I went out, uh, with operation staff, and I said, let's do a meter audit, and, and we had a, uh, we, we changed our, our SOP on the way that it's even done. You know, running water, going up and seeing, because a lot of the times, you, you're not quite sure what's going on on them. Uh, some of these meters that were installed in two thousand and twelve, they don't even span.
How does it even run water?
They don't, so you go, they go up to a hose bin. Because there's a lot of fence there, they go up to a hose bin, and they, they run the water. But the first meter audit I did with, uh, Jose and I did, and, uh, went up to it, and I said, go turn on the water, Jose, and he turned it on, and the meter never even spun. So we knew, hey, this meter's back, you know, and, you know, and. A lot of the meters from two thousand and twelve, that's what we found, whenever those are, but that they were actually installed in two thousand and twelve.
Making copies?
Aren't doing good. But this is a good, you know, this is a good start, and, um, and I wanted, I did it because I wanted Augustine to know the district. So if, even if replaced all these meters, would you still do regular audits on them? I mean, I would think we would continue to do regular audits. Yeah, a yearly audit is a bit excessive, even, even like the AWA and all, they don't, they don't, you know, a yearly audit is, is not something that should be done, but every few years there should be, because this is something, I mean, these meters are charging you money. So to make sure that these meters are working properly, you know, they're, they're charging our customers, you know, money. So we, we need to go out and, and visit these, uh, we test them. Um, and we go out just to, to, to show customers too. We take five gallon buckets out, and we'll fill it up with a hose, and we'll, we'll teach them the whole process, you know, on, on their water usage. We'll do any of that, um, there hasn't been a large demand for that here. Um, but that's something that, you know, anybody calls, we'll do that.
It wouldn't hurt our feelings if you set a little thing on your own to check fifty a month or something, just, that means every two years they're all done.
Yeah, well, they, these are.
When, when the time's available.
Yeah, this has been, it's, this has been a year for Augustine to do this, and, um, and that's just when time's available. There hasn't been too many days where there were not. Yeah, so have we fixed all those twenty-one leaks then? Oh, yeah, these are all, everything on this list has been addressed. Yeah, everything on this list has been addressed.
I mean, he would just do it then, wouldn't he? Would he just replace the union washer or whatever?
Yeah, if, if it's a gap, yes, and, and a district policy is anything on the other side of the meter is customers. Um, if we're able to help a customer out for an amount of a washer or a port, we're doing it. Um, and that's just all there is too, it, it just makes sense, right? If it's in the box, we're gonna do what we can to help. If it's, if it's a process, you know, and then, you know, it, we're, we're even out trying to help people that have the leaks on the backside find those leaks. You know, I don't feel comfortable fixing people's service lines for them. Because, yeah, well, it's against our policy, however, I'll help them find it. We could help them find it if we have the, uh, the resources available, and we have our, our, uh, sounder, and we have employees, so. That's something we're working with them on, but, um, I've, I've seen an increase in a water consumption, sorry, a decrease in our water loss numbers. Uh, with that, you know, I, I have to say that the meter audit, us getting on top of these leaks, I mean, we're, we're on top of leaks like that right now, so. I did, I just, this is not altogether related, but you replace, you replaced that check valve that now. We're not this week. Are you doing it this week? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so now next month, we should see a definite difference in the. No, 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 that check valve has been, I, that's been, that valve is down, so no water is running out into the lake. Zero water is running into the lake right now, man. Because, okay, the check valve that was faulty out there, on this side of it, there's actually a valve, a shut-off valve. So since we're not pumping out an intake, I went down there and cranked that shut-off valve. So now no water's going back into the lake. Everything with our system right now is in our system, no water's gonna enter that lake. So we shouldn't have any leaks, period. Well, we have leaks, you know, it's just one of those things, it's not really pop up, um. Yeah, I understand. In my report, you know, I, 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 I was proud of you guys. We got two transmission leaks done in one day. That's, um, I just signed a, a, a check for nineteen thousand dollars that the district's gonna be paying, I think, uh, an outfit to come fix the last large transmission main leak that we had. We had to call on an emergency basis, they did a wonderful job for us, but we were doing other things. That was nineteen thousand dollars to fix the leak. Uh, was it three Fridays ago? District staff and a welder fixed two transmission leaks in one day. I was out there with them, all the guys were here, we got two of them knocked out one day. So they've been doing a heck of a job out there, and those transmission leaks, from my understanding in the past, those things will leak for a while up here, they weren't getting fixed right away. You know, and when you're putting out a couple hundred gallons a minute, you can see how that's adding up. The last transmission main leak, we, a leak we fixed on Baricope, when you go back to the intake, it was on the hillside there. When you went back to our intake and looked on the hillside where the leak was, the whole hillside, everything's brown right now. The whole hillside was green.
Beautiful.
Going down into the, to the lake, because before it surfaced, we didn't know that. You know, it was just, it's been leaking, you know, in, into that hillside for god knows how long.
I have a question.
So remember, you'll send some cows over.
Yeah, you know, um, that nineteen thousand dollar check, what percent of that is, is materials and what percent is labor?
Well, that's not right. Most of that, it's, it's.
All labor?
As a, as a contractor, I used to take my, my labor, and this is back in more competitive days, I used to take my labor, and my, my costs, right, and then I'd double it, and I'd add twenty percent. That was, that was a long time ago. These days, honestly, especially if you're paying prevailing wages, which we are, we have to. Um, it's more like twenty percent for, for cost, and the other eighty percent is, is, you know. Labor, labor and profit, yeah, and we're paying prevailing wages. And most of these outfits now, everybody's so busy, like, they rented all their equipment. You know, they rented it, had it brought in, so then their rental fees.
What's prevailing wage?
Prevailing wage depends, I think the bottom labor is like, uh, thirty-eight to forty-two dollars now, the bottom labor. If you're, if you're a foreman, you're, you're pushing sixty dollars, seventy dollars now, operating a piece of.
We're in a business up here.
So a fly, who's standing in rows, get forty bucks, easy.
Yeah, so anyhow, with that, the most that we, the more we could do within the district, like these, these audits, finding these, these leaks and fixing our own stuff, all it is is more money in the pocket of the district to help out, help out the aging of construction and get more down with it. So, um, yeah. Okay, we have a, we have a closed session item on the agenda, and, uh, so, and I, so I guess I should close this and.
You close the open, you're closing the open session and going into the.
Close session.
Close session, and you need to give me the time, which my clock has two forty?
Uh, yes.
And there's no member of the public present to ask any questions?
Yes, thank you.
We good?
All right.
We have to open and back up, close the closed session and open up the regular session. And give the time, which is three oh three.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the rip, the closed session and open up the open session, and the time is three oh three, and, uh, I have nothing to report out.
No report out? Okay, you gonna adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
What time?
At three oh four.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, everybody. Here, so.
So you like everything?
Yes.
Hold on.
I charged this light up, it turned itself on, but I turned it off. As good as it's going.
All right. You know, she, you know, she was supposed to be out at, Cindy, she was supposed to be out at what, at twelve thirty, and they couldn't get her bleeding stopped. Half hour needed bleeding stopped.
Good work there.
Um, well, you know, Emery did a good job just filling in, and we got the things going, so.
Good, thank you, Emery.
Yeah, you can always do that if you have a quorum. If you don't, then after a certain time, you probably should call the meeting quits, so. That was good, it worked out.
I, I saw you, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
I called you.
Okay.
We didn't discuss meeting hours, we just brought it up and then.
It's not on the agenda, so you can't discuss it.